Good evening. I just want to thank everybody for having us tonight. We're so excited. Last time I presented, you heard about the development of the LEAP at Quincy College program. And I promised you that I would bring the students and the staff to share from their perspective. So tonight, I have with me Megan Giovinoni, who is the Associate Vice President of Student Success at Quincy College. I have Susannah Freo, who is our Special Education Teacher and the Quincy College Liaison for the program. And we have Diane Peterson and Michaela McGee, who are our educational coaches, and they also serve as the job coaches when the students are at their internships. So I'm gonna pass it over to Megan, and enjoy.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. As Sarah said, my name is Megan Giovinoni. I serve as the Associate Vice President of Student Success and Partnerships at Quincy College, and have had the pleasure of working with not only these wonderful students right behind me, but with the team that you see up here. We began, as most of you may know, the LEAP program this past summer. And Sarah, Susannah, the coaches, and I have really just been shocked about how smoothly it really did launch, given that it was our first year going about this. In summer of '22, I had the pleasure of meeting with each LEAP student individually to just learn a little bit more about what their goals, what their interests were, and how they could maybe see themselves at the college, or maybe what concerns they had about the school. We also had a chance to just really introduce them to the campus. And then before the school year began in August, late August, rather, of '22, we held an orientation event at the college campus as well. Students were invited, parents and families, to really give them a warm welcome and to alleviate any concerns or challenges that they might have on the first day. Like any new program or any new initiative, I think that you start at a school or at a college. People had questions. People had concerns. Okay, what is this going to look like? And shortly, you'll hear about just what an impact these students have made in such a short period of time. Our faculty, our staff have responded and worked with these students in such an inclusive way. But really, I have to give it to the students who have taken such amazing advantage of this opportunity. They have brought a lot of life to the college campus, in the Quincy College lounge, in the classrooms, supporting our athletics teams at different events. And they've really helped to build school spirit in a way that I frankly don't know if it existed or if it didn't exist. It wasn't as evident as it is now. These students are in at least one class at the college last fall, and they're all continuing in one class this semester. We also have a few students who have opted to take two classes, given their academic commitment and success this past fall, which has been wonderful. Another nice thing, in the basement of the Quincy College campus, we have lots of classrooms that we hold down there. And so these students are down there getting supported and learning more about studying and how they can progress in their classes, which I know we'll hear more about this evening. Also at the college, we're in the process of putting together a peer-mentor program that is overseen by our Student Accessibility Services. And we look forward to working more closely with our LEAP students as that program takes off. So I now just wanna, again, say thank you to the students, thank you to the program, and give you the opportunity to hear a little bit more about the impact that they've made.
I'm Kilda Dodian here at Quincy College. Been here under a year. And a couple days a week, for like half a day, we get to work with the LEAP students Severino and Allison particularly, but we know a lot of the other ones through these guys. But they basically assist us or help us with our everyday activities. And, you know, we try to teach them some things. We do a lot with the recyclables and disposables. But we basically have a lot of fun with them, and they have a lot of fun with us. We try to teach them things, and they also teach us a lot of things, too. But they're really, really good kids to work with. And we basically enjoy the time that we spend with them. And we actually look forward to working with them. But they're all good kids, and it's a pretty impressive program here at Quincy College. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Freed, and I am an adjunct professor of ESL at Quincy College. I had the opportunity of working with one of the LEAP students back in September and now this semester. His name is Al Hassan. He, at first, was so quiet. So I look forward to him progressing and really becoming part of the Quincy community and pursuing his dreams. And thank you.
Hi, my name's Melissa Lord. I am the Student Program Wellness Coach here at Quincy College. I do just wanna kind of share my experience that I've had with the LEAP students here at the college so far. It's been a great experience getting to know these students. They bring so much life to the student lounge, as well as participating in a student games club that we do every Thursday from 1:00 to 2:00 in the library. They are friendly students. They excel here at the college. They're great to be around, and we're just so happy to get to know them. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Debbie Palasok. I am a math teacher here at Quincy College. I've worked here for about 20 years. It's been very enjoyable, the past last semester and this semester, to have two LEAP students. They have progressed very well academically and behaviorally. It's been nice to have somebody in the classroom with me to help. These students are well-prepared, always on time. They understand what's doing. And they've done wonderfully. I have no anxiety about having them in class. And they actually have performed much better than some of my other students because they're always on time, they know what to expect, and they never appear lost. I'm excited to see how well they're gonna do this semester and hopefully next semester in math. And I would hope that we could expand on this program because these students are doing very well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vinnie Joyce. The course I took in the fall semester was Speech Communication, the course considered of group speeches and individual speeches. One of my favorite group speeches was the new cast. I had the sports segment where I had to broadcast about Mac Jones' injury. One of my favorite interview speeches was the motivational speech. I talked about never giving up on your dreams. This class taught me how to be a better public speaker and gave me the confidence to work better in group projects. At Quincy College, I am involved in the Chill Club. We get together each week and play board games. I also have had the pleasure of attending Quincy College basketball and hockey games. I enjoy being a part of the Quincy College community. I hope at the outcome of this program, I will be able to get a job with the city of Quincy.
Hi, my name is Christopher Gomes-Cardoso. My internship is at Point Webster Middle School. I work in the food service where some of my duties are putting the food in the cup, putting cookies on a tray, washing dishes, restocking chips, checking expiration date, and serving food to the students. It has been a great experience, and look forward to be there every Tuesday and Thursdays. The ladies that I work with even name dessert after me. Another one of my favorite parts about being at Quincy College is having the freedom of taking the MBTA to the school. I was nervous at first, but now I am able to take 238 bus from Riller Street to Quincy College. I also am able to get my internship on my own, through and out of the public transportation. I look forward to continue to travel the train and get more comfortable getting around outside of Quincy.
Evening. Hi, my name is Jackson Zhou. I'm here for presenting the speech. For the past semester, fall semester, I did take algebra class. I did great at that class. I always got a straight A. In that class, I was not allowed to use any calculator in any of my project. But I did great, though. I want to say that 97% of the grade will be fine for me. Math is important in your life. Whatever you go, what kind of job you have, you always need your math skill, which I hoping for the next semester, I do want to continue to take algebra class for hope. My goal is that after leaving this program, I will allow transformer to another four-year college, if that's for sure. And I also hope to travel across this beautiful, widely country, which was my dream. My internship is at Thomas Crane Library. I enjoy work there. I want to say that seven or eight class for the book on the shelf was not put a rock on my back. I also like to walk up and downstairs to make sure every book in order, which some of people may be putting the mess. I also like to help people for asking different kind of question about this library, which some of them might don't know about where the print machine is. Anyway, I'm enjoying this program, and this program made me feel impeached about making friend, making new life experience. I also do take lots of fun trip in this semester. For example, close from Adam's house and far from Charles to watch those warrior raise on the river, which I never had my experience before. And that's about what I say. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Adam Trump. This semester, I took a speech and communication course. I learned techniques on how to give a good speech. And of course, I gave an informational speech on the different types of apples in New England. I debated on the cons and pros of self-driving cars. My favorite community experience was taking the MBTA red line into Cambridge, into the head of the Charles. We were watching competitive crew teams from the US internationally race. One of clubs I belong to is the Chill Club. This club is formed by a former LEAP student who was at a Quincy College furthering his education. We meet every Thursday, every Thursday afternoon together. We laugh, chat, and eat candy and play games. This is a nice break from my course load. My favorite game is In a Pickle. It was unexpectedly hysterical game. I take the bus to Quincy College, and I just started this past summer. I have become more comfortable each day. One day, I took the wrong bus, and I was able to find, figure out on my own how to get back, how to get to Quincy College. I like taking the red line or the bus to when we go to our community outings. Community outings. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sepharino Rodriguez. I enjoy being part of the Quincy College program, LEAP, sorry. Everyone at the college has been so nice to me. I like eating on the third floor and the students that are in, seeing all the different students that go there. I am making a lot of new friends here. I like that I can take the MBTA to the college every day. I am taking an introduction to computers class this semester. I really like it because I am learning all the technologies that I love. My internship is working with the custodial staff at Quincy College. I help clean the classrooms at the college, and on Tuesdays, I help recycle. We also sweep the garage when needed. I really like working with Mr. Paul and Mr. Ryan.
Before this next student comes up to present, I would like to recognize him for his accomplishments through his high school and his time in the LEAP transition program. Rio Sixtiger has been a member of the North Quincy High School community since 2016. Rio is an exemplary LEAP student, as he has gained maximum independence with all aspects of what he was offered. He participated in the MAC program at Massasoit and continued on with his newly found and rendition here at Quincy College. His professor in his Strength Training and Endurance course remarked that, "I have had a wonderful experience from last semester with Rio in my class." Over the course of the semester, Rio grew both from an academic and professional standpoint and truly excelled in the class. The sense of responsibility, work ethic, and determination to remain as productive and experienced as possible are all qualities that make Rio shine. Indeed, he audited a course, volunteered for his internship in food services at Central Middle School, and reported for his paid job working nights at Chipotle. Now that Rio has turned 22, he has become an employee of Stop &amp; Shop. Rio's supervisors have said that Rio is a pleasure to work with. He is punctual, and once given a task, is independent and completes the job thoroughly. We would like to take this opportunity to say happy birthday, Rio. We wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Freo.
Okay. My name is Rio Sixtiger. The course I took in the fall semester was Strength Training and Endurance. This class was very enjoyable for me because I learned how to properly use the machines at the gym, which is muscles are being worked on. I have a YMCA membership and work out there on a regular basis and also was able to participate in yoga community classes through the Thomas Crane Library. My favorite community experience was the scavenger hunt around the city of Quincy. I also enjoy all the trips into Boston because I enjoy using public transportation in order to get around. I rely on the MBTA to get my works sites at Central Middle School and Chipotle. I am happy to have been a part of the LEAP Quincy College program. And as I aged out and moved forward, I have learned skills that helped me get to get a job at Stop &amp; Shop. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Mulvey and school committee members. To start, I would like to take the moment to thank Quincy Public Schools and Quincy College for giving myself, the educational coaches, Ms. McGee and Ms. Peterson, and the selected students from the Learn, Explore, Achieve, Plan, or LEAP Transition Program the opportunity to be part of this exciting new program. It's been amazing to see the students' independence level and confidence in themselves grow in just four short months. They're not only happy to be part of the Quincy College experience, but they've also been accepted into this community with open arms. The feedback from the professors has been amazing, with some of our students achieving the highest grades in their course. Each student has participated in internships around the city, travel training, and community experiences. Having this program at Quincy College has given them the opportunity to better explore the community and rich history of the city in which they live. Thank you.
Is there any questions? Anyone have anything?
I just wanted to say, your speakers were amazing. They did such a fabulous job. I'd like to give them another round of applause.
While she's setting that up, I just wanna say there are 12 students in the program right now. These are the six that are on. Okay, I guess we're working now. Anyway, so do I have any comments or questions from my colleagues? Mrs. Cahill?
That's amazing. I really, I mean, I'm so proud of the program. And bringing the students here makes such a huge difference when we get to see, you know, the work that you're doing from them firsthand. And you guys did great. I can't, if I took an algebra class, I would not be getting a 97. That's for sure. And I'm just, you know, really proud, and be proud of yourselves. You're doing a great job, and the whole program's amazing. Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yeah, I couldn't be more pleased. This is a fantastic opportunity for you and for the school system. And to see somebody who's already transitioned into the world of work and is traveling around the city on the T is phenomenal. So you should be so proud of yourself, and thank you for sharing with us. We don't get to be there during the day to see this experience, but you really brought it to us. And because of the way you spoke, I really felt like I knew what you were doing there. And you are all amazing. So I'm so pleased you came. Thank you so much for this presentation. And thank you to the coaches and the staff also. I know what kind of work that is.
Mr. Gettrau?
Thank you. I just wanna thank the students for their personal insights into what they see in the classroom and the personal experiences that they have. And I wanna thank Megan, as always, and the team at Quincy College for all that they do to help students at all levels. You know, what we learn from these experiences is that you're giving students, these and other talented students, really, the access, not only to education, but to internships, into career paths, into personal independence, as well as community service. And the opportunity to come before us and talk this through and let us know is incredibly meaningful to see really how consequential programs like this can be. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the partnership between the school system and the college. And I know how hard you all work towards making this program work for kids who thought they could never do what they're doing. So it means a lot. The college means a lot to me as well, as it was a very important part of my life. And I keep getting reports about the Chill Club from Jake Luzan. So I know what's happening on a daily basis. And they're just very excited to be doing what they're doing, and I thank you all for making that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yeah, years ago, this wouldn't even been a concept that we could even look at. And seeing you guys here before us is just amazing to me. I know it's a cooperative effort between the people who are with you on a daily basis, but you guys have also done your work, and kudos to you. And it's nice to see some old familiar faces. So again, great presentation, and I'm so impressed. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I too just wanna thank everyone, the entire team, Sarah, Megan, Julie Granback there, of course, the Assistant Superintendent as well, and of course, all the students. Vinnie gives me a pretty much weekly update on the progress of the entire team. So I'm very grateful for that. Thank you, Vinnie. I also wanna thank President DeCristofaro, who, in collaboration with us and Sarah and Megan and the Assistant Superintendent, brought forth this idea during COVID, one of our craziest times. And thanks to, obviously, the team stepping up in our collaboration with Quincy College and our other partners, including Stop &amp; Shop and some of the others you heard tonight. We're really giving a leg up to all of our students who participate in this program and to make sure that they have success beyond high school. So again, thank you to everyone, and we're very grateful for this program and for everything the students and the staff do for the Quincy Public Schools. So thank you very much. Great job, Vinnie.
And just wanted to add, before my microphone got all screwed up there, I just wanted to say that I am so very proud of you all. You guys are doing an amazing job, and I am truly just so proud of you. Thank you. And we're gonna take a quick recess while we collect ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move on. Next item on our agenda is early college high school program update with Mr. Keith Segala to present.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Hubley. And good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, Megan Jovanoni, joining us for the second time this evening, will, her and I will both provide an update of Quincy's evening, Quincy College High School update this evening for you. We'll highlight our demographics, funding and budget sources, Quincy's Early College Second Annual Symposium, as well as various program enhancements. And finally, we'll close with an update of our Early College Summer Institute planning. We're pleased and so very proud of the progress we've made thus far over these past, not only this year, but the past two years. And we hope you will be as well. So without further ado, we'll begin our next presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. So I'm going to start with just an overview of our Early College High School pathway numbers, particularly our growth in enrollment from fall of 2021, which you can see on the presentation here was at a total of 149 students. We're thrilled to know that that number has increased to 204. And we'll dig a little bit more into that number on the next slide with a look at each of the high schools.
You're sorry.
There we go. So as you can see, that 104, or excuse me, the 204, we had a total of 113 new stu-, or students, rather, for the fall 2022 year, a total of 113, and then 91 at Quincy High. So we have increased at both of the high schools. You'll also notice the breakdown by grade. Specifically, we do recognize that grade 11 at North Quincy High is a bit higher than the other grades and at both of the, at the other school as well. So then going back to the overall statistics, again, that's a look at enrollment. We look forward to heading closer to our goal of 250 students, which is our ongoing goal, particularly for fall of '23. We're also pleased to share that from when that 204 was recorded for fall '22, we have actually had, I believe, three to four new students opt into the program for the spring '23 semester. So thrilled that that number is increasing, thanks to the work of our early college coaches and school counselors. You can also see a breakdown of our race ethnicity of our students, with a higher percentage of Asian, Black, African American, as well as Caucasian students. And if you look at the special populations, again, which are all populations that we aim to target through this program, you'll see our English language learners, our special ed students, as well as our low income. And we think it's particularly important to share these numbers with a focus on those special populations, because when this program began, or even talks of the program began over two years ago, those are the populations that we're aiming to really target and serve through this program. So again, just a thank you to the work of the staff and the faculty to make those statistics and bring this program to these students.
If you look to the bottom left, you see the balloons or bubbles. You'll notice a 50-50 split, 102 females to 102 males currently enrolled in our Early College High School program. Just a fact that there are more males enrolled at North Quincy High, 64 to 49. And at Quincy High, there are more females, 53 to 38 males enrolled at Quincy High School. 52.9, 53% of early college students are first-generation students, as we continue to meet our initial goal of targeting high-need students. We're pleased with that statistic. And that far right bubble, 37.3, that's 76 students of Quincy's Early College students are currently enrolled in our vocational program. Seventy-six. So what's wrong with that?
So this is a look at the current pathway course offerings and staffing. As you might remember from last year, one of our enhancements for the '22-'23 school year was to add that bottom course, Statistics, for grade 12 students at three credits. We particularly appreciate the work of Marissa Smith at North Quincy High and Anna Pekoski at Quincy High School, who have done just a tremendous job in not only working with our Quincy College faculty to bring this curriculum to life, but really being so hands-on and supportive with our students. And again, you'll see just an overview here of the other courses that we did offer last year, that we continue to offer this year. And so for a student who begins this program in grade 10, they do have the opportunity to earn up to 22 college credits before graduating from high school.
The next two slides is the Early College Funding Overview of 2022-23. And if you can think of two buckets of funding. The first bucket of funding is from State Street Foundation. Once again, they have generously donated $500,000 to the Early College Program. You'll see the breakdown as follows. Quincy College received 350 of the $500,000 for salaries for the transition coaches, which are placed in both Quincy High and North Quincy High School, as well as college faculty stipends and tuition and fees in which our students are currently enrolled in those courses. Quincy Public Schools also receives $150,000 of the $500,000 for the salaries of the Early College School Counselors. And there's two of them, one in each high school. As well as their summer per diem, they do work 10 days over the summer to support early college preparation for the fall. The next part, the next bucket of funding is funding from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's the Early College Support Grant. Currently, we, currently, we have received $327,000 this year alone, and it's still climbing. Pleased to report. You'll notice how the funding is spent. It's spent on academic tutoring services, expenses for the Second Annual Symposium, textbooks and materials, additional educational resources, common planning time, which is optional for early college instructors, MBTA passes for students traveling from north to the Quincy College and other field trips throughout the year for early college students, the summer student recruitment enrollment specialists, as well as summer collaboration, which is also a, an optional opportunity for staff to participate professional development, whether it's with their co-partner from the other school or Quincy College faculty. We're pleased to report that we just received $123,000 for summer. And we'll share a little bit about that in just a moment.
So as you all have a copy of our Early College High School Symposium packet that was distributed at last week's symposium, and a thank you to Catherine Hubley and Frank Santoro for joining us last Friday as well. You see the front of the packet there, and there's all kinds of information enclosed inside. The mission of the Early College High School Symposium now in its second year is really to celebrate and reflect on Quincy's Early College High School Pathway Initiative. We also want to recognize that students, as you see outlined here, really had an opportunity to participate in a variety of workshops and activities during that morning. All of these were designed to support their college experience, and they had the opportunity to actually hear from last year's Early College High School alumni, Quincy College faculty, and other industry employers, including State Street Corporation, as Keith just mentioned. We also appreciate the engagement and participation of our faculty and staff, who participated in several hours of professional development and training related to this program. More specifically, we had a series of guest speakers this year, which was wonderful. We were joined by Mayor Koch, Ron Mariano, Speaker of the House, Catherine Craven, Chair, Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, Secretary of Education, Erica G. M. Petro, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Alliance for Early College. And other special guests included Omyra Alisa of the State Street Foundation, who was involved in that activity with the students later on in the morning, as well as Kristen Hunt, Rebecca Barr, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and Massachusetts Early College High School Team. We were also thrilled to be joined by these two outstanding student speakers that you'll see on the screen. We really wanted to make sure that everything about Friday's Symposium was student-centered and really student-driven. And that started with the Master of Ceremonies, Ms. Janai Johnson, who you see on the right-hand side there. She's a grade 12 Quincy High Early College High School student. And then joined by Cassidy Plant, a grade 12 North Quincy High Early College student, who served as our student speaker, and really gave the audience a look at what her experience has been with this program. Both of these ladies spent hours practicing and working with the support team and staff to ensure that they were ready to go for the big day. And I think for anyone that has seen the videos, they were exceptional. So we thank them. This is, we're going to share just a few photos from Friday's event. So here you'll see Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, Secretary of Education. He's also the former superintendent of Lynn Public Schools and has a very close connection to early college programs. He certainly shared his support of what Quincy is doing and was an excellent speaker to be joined by last week. This is a look at four of the Early College High School alumni there, seated behind the table, who were speaking to current grade 10 Early College High School students. Now three out of those four alumni are actually current Quincy College students. And one of the gentlemen there is attending UMass Boston this year. This entire workshop was facilitated by Eli Stewart, who's the Quincy High Early College High School Transition Coach. And the students really seemed to enjoy this session and hearing from folks who had just went through the program. And finally, here you'll see Dr. Deb Panisak, who's a Quincy College math instructor, who's been working very closely with Marissa Smith and Anna Pekoski throughout the year to deliver the statistics course to these students. This is a group of grade 11 students who are currently enrolled in the Early College Program and were able to participate in this workshop led by the math faculty and instructors.
Unveiled at the Symposium is Quincy's Early College High School Pathway logo. This logo captures the collaboration between Quincy College and Quincy Public Schools in the spirit of our great city. A special thank you to RTI International and Kara Pabrov, the North Quincy High College Transition Coach, for their guidance and creation of Quincy's Early College High School logo design. Quincy's Early College High School pillars were established by Quincy's Early College High School instructors. The four Early College High School pillars, which include excellence, community, honor, and self-advocacy, represent the foundational elements of identity and accountability for Quincy's Early College High School students as they navigate their pathway. At this time, the students will share, will assist in highlighting the four pillars.
Pillar one, excellence. The definition of excellence is the quality of being outstanding, greatness.
A student of excellence is a positive influencer, a sensitive and empathetic individual, as well as a skill communicator.
Pillar two, community. The definition of community is a feeling of fellowship with others, as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Students involved in a community share a feeling of belonging, pride, and desire to see success for all.
Honor, to regard or treat someone with admiration or respect.
Students who show honor consistently have good character, attitude, quality, and high standards, and show respect for self and others.
Self-advocacy, the action of representing oneself or one's views or interests.
Students who self-advocate communicate their needs, make informed decisions, and take responsibility for those decisions.
And that pillar video was shared as part of Friday's Symposium as well. And again, we thank the students and the instructors who made that possible. The Early College High School Quincy College Pathway Scholarship, we're thrilled to announce we are now offering this for the second year. You'll see a handout in your program packet as well that kind of outlines the details and the information that has been shared with grade 12 Early College High School students and their families. This opportunity was announced and provided to 72 grade 12 students on Friday while they were at the Symposium. And now we have our coaches, as well as our counselors at each of the high schools, going into classrooms, promoting this opportunity, and also answering questions that students may have. Most of the bullets that you see outlined here are similar to what was offered last year as part of the Symposium. This scholarship intends to provide current grade 12 Early College High School Pathway students with a full tuition scholarship for the '23-'24 academic year. It will cover up to 24 credits, fees, and textbooks for the entire academic year. We do ask that students complete a scholarship commitment form provided by their college transition coach. And again, they do need to apply to Quincy College, which they have assistance with from their coaches. Students do also complete the financial aid, FAFSA process, as part of this application. And we do ask that students maintain the 2.0 GPA at the college. Students this year, which we'll talk a bit about later, are also visiting the college campus as they're in grade 12 on a much more regular basis. And so we look forward to continuing to share those opportunities with them, and then to work specifically with those students who do opt to matriculate to the college for fall '22. Last year, we did have 12 students take advantage of the Early College High School Full Year Scholarship, and 28 students take advantage of our First Semester Quincy Public School Scholarship, which is a scholarship that is granted to any Quincy Public School grade 12 graduate who matriculates to Quincy College upon high school graduation. Another enhancement that we are in the process of establishing for this year is our Quincy's Early College High School Parent Advisory Council. This advisory council aims to increase awareness to the Early College High School pathway at both of the high schools. Parents through this council will have the opportunity to learn more about the initiatives, provide insight on how to better serve the students, and collaborate with one another between both schools. Current early college parents will have the opportunity to connect with others through this program, and also with prospective early college high school parents to share program insight, assist in event coordination, and contribute to the Early College High School and Quincy Public School community. We aim to hold engagement events that will be held to celebrate the students in the program and give parents the opportunity to engage with their teachers, staff, and administration at their respective schools. The first Parent Advisory Council is tentatively scheduled right now for Monday, March 27, at 4 o'clock at Quincy College. And Eli Stewart, who is our Early College High School Transition Coach at Quincy High, has been working collaboratively with both high schools, with the principals, and is in the process of establishing this council. We have sent out communications, and we have received interest from parents already, which is exciting. The goal of this council will to have four advisory meetings per year and one to two events per year, as explained. And as I said, the outreach to the parents has begun this week. So a special thank you to Eli for his efforts on this.
Our next program enhancement is the, is the Early College High School Pathway Grade 12 visitations to Quincy College. Quincy's Early College Grade 12 students have the opportunity to visit the college campus. There are four scheduled full-day visitations, one per term, traditionally held on Fridays, and taught by Quincy College faculty. Two visitations are completed, and we are preparing for the next, next visitation, which will be held on Friday, March 3. Early College Grade 12 students begin their day with their academic classes, English Composition and Statistics. Lunch is then provided. And during that second half of the day, students participate in academic and non-academic supports, as well as community work. A series of Early College High School Parent Academies have been scheduled. You'll note the flyer inside your packets. Quincy's Early College High School Pathway Academies will provide participants a better understanding of all Quincy's early college initiatives, including learning the purpose and guiding principles of the Early College Pathway, understand the benefits of Early College Pathway Initiative, as well as the academic and non-academic supports available to students. They'll also learn about Quincy's Early College Parent Advisory Council and our Summer Institute planning. They'll also They'll also receive information pertaining to the 2003-2024 early college online application process. And this final slide is the Early College Pathway Summer Institute. Planning and preparations have begun for Quincy's Summer Institute. Quincy's early college summer institute will offer an array of summer course offerings. You'll see that in the upper left-hand corner. Last year, we had two. This year, we have more than seven, where students can enroll in up to two courses this summer. They can obtain up to three, four, six, or seven or eight credits if they so choose to. Introduction to Computers, Foundations of Business, Public Speaking, Sociology, Precalculus, Introduction to Biotechnology, Nutrition, Forensic Science, are all just a variety of courses, again, with an increased course offerings for our students of early college who will have priority, but certainly open to all students in incoming grades 10, 11, and 12, as well as graduating seniors. We anticipate 80 to 100 students to enroll. Incentives would include the free tuition and fees, free textbooks and materials, and MBTA Charlie Card if needed, as well as complimentary snacks, which we're looking forward to that. The course anticipated date, we believe, is July 10th through August 11th. Just to note, if you are enrolling in the four-credit course, it may be a little bit longer. It may be not only five weeks, but maybe six or perhaps seven for the labs. Additional supports is listed right there, as you can see. So at this time, we'll entertain questions or comments you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. That was wonderful. Thank you. Questions for my colleagues? Mrs. Santoro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mentioned earlier about the importance of what the college had meant to me, and especially having people at both sites, the high school and the college, help these kids get through what they probably thought they could never do, is very meaningful, important. And, you know, we all have ideas. And I know Dr. Chris Faro and Superintendent Mulvey, we all have great ideas, but putting this thing together with the necessary funding made it happen. And I want to thank you, Megan, for your knowledge at the college, the number of grants that are available. Mr. Segala, I want to thank you as well because your knowledge of the partnerships that you have within the city public school system, and just making this happen. There's no better team than the two of you. And I just want to thank you on behalf of all those kids who probably never thought they'd go to college will be very successful at what they do. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Mrs. Lebo?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. It was great. I'm sorry that I missed the event. I had planned on being there, and I was really sorry to miss it. Really impressive with the diversity. It's wonderful to see that kind of diversity reflecting our students across the board coming into this program. I have a question. The summer institute is at the college site?
Correct.
That's terrific, because I think the more the kids are on campus, the more they'll likely see themselves there. It won't be like dual enrollment. It will really be like early college, so I'm thrilled with that. I have one question. You said the scholarship is full tuition. If they have to fill out the FAFSA, would their Pell Grant apply if they got one?
Correct. If they are eligible for Pell, that will kick in first, since that's nothing that would have to be paid back by the student, and then the college will supplement the rest.
So that has been a real problem at some for-profit institutions, just so you know. So I'm really pleased to see it here, where it's being managed a whole lot better, because these students are being successful, because you don't want a student blowing their Pell Grant and not getting anything in the end, which has happened in for-profit institutions. So I'm really pleased that that's, that it's being managed so well here. I also want to thank the partners. The partners, the funders are incredible, just incredible to have those people on board with us working on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cahill?
Thank you. I obviously appreciate the partnership, you know, my experience at the college and now here. I just, you know, because this is broadcast, I think it's a good opportunity for you to maybe communicate, what is the mission of the early college high school, like the targeted population, and how do the students apply? How do you get those targeted populations to apply to the program?
Yeah. So I can start, and if you want to jump in at all, Keith? No, so it's a great question. And so the statistics piece that we covered towards the beginning, the target population to kind of begin there is high-need students. And so with high need, we look at first-generation, low-income, EL, special ed, as kind of the top contenders, I would say. Within that group, because we are still early on in the program, we of course are promoting this program to all students who might be interested. But through the application process, which is overseen by our early college high school transition coaches and the school counselors, they are looking closely and individually at each application in order to ensure that the students who we're accepting are students who might not necessarily be top of their class, have perfect attendance, you know, have no jobs outside of school. Most of them do have all of those challenges, if you will. However, the purpose of this program is to really cater and instill that confidence in those students that even though they might have not had, again, the perfect attendance, or haven't always been the best English-language speaker in the classroom, or maybe needed a little bit of extra time to complete certain assignments, that college is still something that is not only within reach for them, but is something that they're earning credit towards while they're still in high school. I don't know if you want to elaborate?
I can just add, once again, that the early college counselors and the coaches are doing a terrific job identifying those students at risk that would benefit from this program.
And they encourage them to kind of participate?
100%, yes.
And I know this is new, and it's only your second year, but last year, do you have an idea, do you have a number in your head of the amount of credits that seniors earned last year and transferred to, I know we do Quincy College, any students go to another institution outside of Quincy College and were able to use those credits moving forward?
So last year's Grade 12 students had the opportunity, because it was the first year of the program, to earn a total of six credits through early college. They took English Comp 1 for three credits and English Comp 2. This year, if a student joined as a senior, they could earn up to now nine credits, since we've added that statistics course. And yes, the credits have transferred to a variety of other institutions. I don't have the list on me, but we do have a record of where every student ended up going.
You have students that?
Yeah.
But remember, if you're in Grade 10, enrolled in the early college, and you begin the program this year, you could earn up to 22 college credits during the school day. If you participate over the summer and you take up to six credits, that's another 18 credits. Total could be 40 before you walk out the door as a senior.
Good information for people out there that are paying attention and watching what we're doing.
Yes.
And then if a student does well, they earn the college credits. If they have a hiccup and maybe don't do well in a class, but they complete the class, they get their high school credits for that class.
That's accurate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. Mr. Ghetra?
First of all, I love the program. And I'm blown away with the growth and how you've done. It's fascinating to me. I was talking to somebody that I know personally that has $160,000 in student loan debt, $160,000. And it's programs like this that hit this demographic that are just astonishing, to give people access that they ordinarily wouldn't have. Thank you for the presentation, but the update on the changes to the program, I thought they were great. And the demographic data Mrs. Lebo mentioned, that must be gratifying for you to see the demographic data. You know, it was great. It was just so good to watch. And then, as I said, impressed by the growth of the program. And then the final comment was that you get the Secretary of Education to come last week. And, you know, Ben Franklin said, "If you want to make a friend, let someone do you a favor." He has done you a favor by coming and speaking on behalf of this program and will probably forever be a fan. So that is just extraordinary, to have him early on in his tenure and early in the growth of this program. So that's good stuff, good stuff, model for the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we've gone on our agenda. Next, we have Ms. Graham to present the Special Education Rights and Responsibilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoobley, and members of the committee for having us here this evening to present the Parents' Rights and School responsiveness presentation. I'd like to start by introducing the team members that I have here with me. To my right is Katie Carey, Special Education Team Administrator, Sarah Anderson, Coordinator for High School and Middle School, Donna Cunningham, Special Education Team Administrator, and Simone Buckley, Special Education Team Administrator. And unfortunately, Jennifer Leary was unable to be with us this evening. So the goal for our presentation tonight kind of falls under three categories. We want parents to understand their child's rights and the special education process. We want to build upon that collaboration between family and school personnel, and that it will enhance those policies and procedures. We also want parents and school personnel to participate in the special education process in all matters as knowledgeable partners. This is something we, as a team, have been working really hard on, is really ensuring that parents know their rights as well as the rights of their children, so that they can participate in all aspects as knowledgeable partners. So I am going to now turn it over to Sarah.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to start by just explaining a little bit about the special education laws and why we are doing what we're doing. So over 50 years ago, in 1972, the Commonwealth landmark special education law, Chapter 766, was signed and became the model for the first federal special education legislation. Chapter 766 helped bring thousands of young people into more inclusive educational settings, required team evaluations, annual reviews, and individual education plans. This law guaranteed the rights of all young people with special needs, age 3 to 22, to an educational program that best suited their needs. Massachusetts laid the groundwork for the Individual with Disabilities Act, called IDEA, which is the federal law intended to improve educational outcomes for children and youth with disabilities. It was originally adopted in 1975 as the Education for All Handicapped Children's Act. Over the years, Congress continued to review and revise the law to ensure that children with disabilities be granted a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment and to have equal access to education.
Thank you, Sarah. So this slide demonstrates the 13 types of disabilities identified...
Sorry. I know, I have one more. Oh, sorry, sorry. When is a student eligible for special education? So a student is eligible for special education when they meet one or more of the 13 recognized categories of disabilities, which you'll hear more about in the presentation. If the student is not making effective progress in their classroom at school as a result of their disability, and if the student requires specially-designed instruction by a special education teacher in order to make effective progress in the curriculum.
Now, thank you, Sarah. Okay, so this slide demonstrates the 13 types of disabilities identified by state and the federal regulations. Once a student is eligible for special education services, the team will determine if there is an adverse educational impact on learning and provide appropriate resources. I will highlight some of the disabilities and how Quincy Public Schools provide services for them. First is autism. Autism is a developmental delay disability that significantly affects verbal and nonverbal communication and social interactions. This is generally evident before three years of age and adversely affects a child's educational performance. Teachers that provide these services and strategies can be found in the CARES classrooms and throughout the city from ages 3 to 22. CARES stands for Children Achieve Real Educational Success. Next is developmental delay. A student with a developmental delay is between 3 and 9. This student is significantly limited, impaired, or delayed with difficulties in sensory, motor, language, social, and emotional areas. Students that exhibit a slower rate of learning or have disorganized patterns of learning, difficulty with adapting behavior, and/or difficulty understanding abstract concepts can be found to have an intellectual impairment. Teachers, therapists, and professionals that support and provide these resources for students with intellectual impairments can be found in the Special Needs Learning Center program. Sensory impairment, excuse me. A sensory impairment includes students that present as hearing impaired, hard of hearing, or with vision that is limited, impaired, or absent. They demonstrate reduced performance in visual acuity tasks, written language, and/or understanding information presented auditorily or visually. This disability also includes students that have any combination of hearing and/or visual impairments that adversely affects communication, developmental, and educational needs. Neurological impairment. A neurological impairment can include students that receive a traumatic brain injury or has a limited capacity of the nervous system. Emotional impairment. An emotional impairment includes students that exhibit characteristics over a period of time, and it adversely affects their educational performance. For example, depression. Communication impairment. A communication impairment includes a student with the capacity to use expressive or receptive language. This includes a limited, impaired, delayed of speech, articulation, or other modes of communication. Next is health impairment. And health impairments include students with a chronic or acute health problem that limits or impairs the capacity of strength and alertness that adversely affects a student's educational performance. Next is SLD, or Specific Learning Disability. This manifests itself in a student's imperfect ability to listen, think, speak, read, write, spell, or do math calculations. This includes students that are now able to identify as dyslexia. Other examples are brain injury and developmental aphasia. Students with this specialty can be found in the Language Development Classes, Resource Rooms, and General Education classes. Lastly, are students included with multiple disabilities? This is not explicitly defined by the state, but includes a variety or combination of the already-defined disabilities. And now Simone will define special education.
Thank you, Katie. Specially-designed instruction varies based on individual student needs. Specially-designed instruction can mean changes in the information a student has taught or changes in how a student demonstrates learning. Special education may consist of related services, such as speech and language, occupational and physical therapy, that are necessary for the student with a disability to make progress or to access the general education curriculum. Special education is always designed to meet each individual student's needs, meaning it is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It is individually designed to meet students' needs by addressing the disability and assisting the student to both make progress and become more independent in demonstrating his or her learning. As you can see from the illustration here, we again emphasize that special education is only one of the types of support services that may be available in a general education program. Special education is not a location. Special education services may be delivered in a variety of ways and in a variety of settings, ranging from supportive services in the general education classroom to services provided in separate environments. Other supportive services include vocational education, instructional support services, bilingual education, counseling services, after-school services, tutorial services, et cetera. Now I'm going to talk about timelines. So if your child requires special education, then from the time that you consent to the evaluation, the district has 45 school working days to do the following. First, complete the evaluation. This is required to be done within the first 30 school working days of the 45-day period. Then convene the team to consider eligibility. You have the right to ask for and receive written assessment results two days in advance of the meeting. two days in advance of the meeting. We recommend you do so, so that you are prepared and are able to determine if you have questions regarding assessment information. If the student is found eligible at the same meeting, the team will also develop an IEP, and in most cases, at the same meeting, the team will determine the appropriate placement to provide the services on the IEP. Immediately following that team meeting, the district must provide you, the parent, with the proposed IEP and proposed placement. You have the right to accept, in part or in full, the IEP and placement, or refuse the IEP and placement. The regulations require that you exercise these consent and refusal rights within 30 days of receiving the proposed IEP and proposed placement from the district. If you consent, as soon as the district receives your written consent, services should begin promptly. That means if your child does need special education and you provide consent immediately, then service will begin as soon as you have provided your signature accepting the IEP and placement. If you have to discuss or consider other services or placements, or if you wish to think about the proposed IEP and placement before consenting to it, services will begin once you have provided a signature accepting the IEP and placement. Thank you.
So there are several principles that guide us in our work with you and your student. Can you hear me? Okay. So there are several principles. So the first principle is parent and student participation. This is an extremely important, underlying, tenet, component of what we do. We want and need and value parental participation in all aspects of the IEP process, both in the planning and decision-making. You know your child best. As students grow older, they are expected to participate in the IEP process as much as possible. This begins as early as age 13, if they are turning 14 during that IEP period. Students are the focus of all that we do, and they need to help plan for the education and beyond. The district will always try to ensure parent and student participation. While face-to-face is always best, sometimes phone conference calls or Google meets are arranged. If English is not the first language, we will typically arrange for interpreters. Some parents may be hearing impaired, and carts may be used to ensure their full participation as well. Principle two is FAP. FAP stands for Free, at no cost to the parent or to the family, Appropriate. The services are designed to help a student progress in meeting their individual goals, Public, which is provided by the district, and Education. That encompasses preschool through high school or until a student turns 22, and includes extracurricular activities. Principle three ensures that we offer appropriate evaluations. The first time a child is tested to determine eligibility, it is called an initial. Thereafter, once eligible, students are assessed in all areas of suspected need at least every three years. Assessments that may be proposed include psychological, which is typically cognitive and social-emotional functioning assessments, including the WISPs, SWE, or BASS, for example. Educational testing will be proposed, which is looking at achievement in reading, writing, math. They use tools such as the C-Top, the Woodcock-Johnson, and other assessments. Occupational therapy will take a look at a child's fine motor needs. They have a variety of tools that they use. And we also have speech and language pathologists. They typically use what's called the SELF, and that's taking a look at a child's expressive and receptive language abilities along with articulation. We have physical therapists, who may take a look at a child's gross motor abilities. In addition, if there are other needs, we have a teacher of the deaf and a vision specialist who work with our students as well. The assessment tools need to be unbiased, and they have to be specifically chosen to assess suspected areas of disability. We can't rely on just one measure or tool. We need a variety of tools, and we rely on information provided by teachers and parents. Bias is also considered when we are determining if a student has a specific learning disability. We want to make sure that we are not identifying a student as disabled due to economic, race, or other factors.
Thank you, Donna. Principle four is the Individualized Education Program, or the IEP. The very first part of the IEP asks, "What concerns do the parents want to see addressed in the IEP?" As Ms. Cunningham mentioned, once students turn 13 or will be turning 14 in an IEP period, students are also invited to attend those meetings, and it's important that we ask them that question as well. The next section of the IEP addresses the student's strengths, their areas of interests, and any other accomplishments they may have achieved. The next section is the Key Evaluation Results, which explain how the student's disability impacts their ability to learn and to demonstrate skills. The team then develops SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. Specific objectives are developed as to how and what needs to be accomplished in that IEP period in order for the child to achieve that goal. Service delivery is then listed, with the specific services being provided, the amount of time for each specific service, and who will be providing that service. Principle number five is the Least Restrictive Environment. Least Restrictive Environment means, to the maximum extent appropriate, students with disabilities have the right to be educated in the general education environment and in classrooms that they would attend if they did not have a disability. It is our goal to always provide access to the general education environment. When we remove students from that general education environment, we think long and hard about what is most appropriate for that student. We do not remove students from the general education classroom solely because of their need for modifications or accommodations. Sometimes we have to get really creative in supporting our students. That might mean that interventionists go into that student's classroom, such as literacy teachers, EL teachers, occupational therapists, speech therapists. We do everything possible to ensure that that student has access within the general education setting. Removal from the general education setting only occurs when the nature and severity of the student's disability requires specialized instruction that cannot be provided in a general education classroom. A move to a more restrictive classroom will only occur when we have exhausted all other options. Principle number six is the Procedural Safeguards. Parents of students with disabilities receive a copy of that written notice every year. Most often, it goes home either in September or as the child's IEP is presented. Parents also receive written notice of all IEP activities. That includes meetings, evaluations. Any changes that are made to the IEP must be presented in writing. The parents have the right to consent or to reject all or part of what is being proposed. That means that they can reject or consent to any proposals of evaluations, services, or placements. Schools cannot evaluate or change services of a child without the written consent of a parent. Parents can remove and revoke their consent at any time in writing. Occasionally, team members may disagree on what is being proposed, and then a stay-put of the last accepted IEP is in place. Occasionally, there are going to be times when the parents and the school are not able to meet an agreement. In these cases, for the protection of the parents and the students, the Problem Resolution System, Mediation, and Due Process Procedures are used. This includes contacting the Office of Quality Assurance and the Board of Special Education Appeals. Going through this process is always at a last resort. We try everything possible to not get to this point, but this process is there, in place, to solve problems with a neutral party. Timelines are also in place to ensure that the school completes tasks and parents receive information in a timely manner. Confidential records. Staff receives training each year that information should only be shared among staff members who need to know that information. Information should only be shared with outside providers with the written consent of parents. And lastly, parents have the right to receive copies of all evaluations and reports up to two days prior to the meeting upon request. Not nearly as exciting, as engaging, as Sarah's program earlier, but any other questions that we can answer for you?
That was a great presentation. As a parent who's gone through years and years of IEP meetings, I think you hit everything I was looking for. Are they going to say... okay, they said that. Okay, they're going to say that. Okay, they said that. Okay, so you've got the major points in there, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. ...
Any questions, comments for my colleagues?
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions, but thank you for the work that you're doing. You know, it's really important, obviously, as we know. And I'm sure it's not an easy, you know, process along the way sometimes, so... But thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Mr. Begoli.
Thank you. As a person who worked with some of you at the table, that's a great synopsis of a law that's really very difficult for a lot of people to understand, particularly parents. You know, it's a very scary situation for parents, I think, when they initially get into it, because it's their child you're talking about. And no one's more important than your own child. So I think what Quincy tries to do is to make it a cooperative effort between parents and the school system, not an adversarial one. And I think where things break down is when it starts to become adversarial. One of the things you didn't mention, and is in the evaluation process, if a parent disagrees with the findings of a other school's evaluation, they have a right to go to an outside...
Yes.
...place to get another evaluation.
They do, and receive an independent evaluation.
Right.
Yes.
And but Quincy doesn't have to accept that, those findings. When you get together, you can go back and forth with them. Am I correct? Is that still correct?
We consider them. We consider... we go through all the recommendations, and we come to some sort of agreement and understanding together.
Right, because some of them are not able to be done in the system. I talked to the prior superintendent about this years ago, about we send a lot of kiddos out to private placements for education, which is appropriate in many cases. But I was asking him if we could possibly do something in the city of Quincy to do something with our kids who have dyslexia. If a place outside can do it, we certainly have enough professionals within our own system who could do it. And it's just a question of finding a place to do it and then getting people to buy into that. And then we could use that. We could use that as a collaborative for school systems around us.
Sure, sure.
And I think it would save money. I think it's something to look into.
I will say, you know, also with your support, we have made considerable progress in our LDC program. You know, as we mentioned when we presented our program improvement plan, Ms. Buckley spends a lot of time in the LDC program, and we do a lot of consultation work and collaboration with Landmark Outreach, which, as many of you know, is one of the, you know, premier schools for working with students with dyslexia. And we have their consultants in our buildings all the time, you know, working with our staff, observing students, but most importantly, providing us with ongoing professional development to really ensure that we are continuing to move forward and support our students as best we can, because we want Quincy kids to stay in Quincy.
Right.
And we, you know, really do everything that we can. And additionally, with the, you know, the help of Mrs. Perkins and Bridget Vaughn, we've also had a number of, a significant number of our staff trained in Orton-Gillingham, which is one of the, you know, really excellent programs in looking to support students that have dyslexia. So although I absolutely hear your concern, I do think that we've come a long way in supporting those students in recent years.
No, I know we haven't, but I'm still concerned about the kid who gets on a van at 7 o'clock in the morning, doesn't come up till 5:00. That's a long day for a kid. And I think if we could figure out something in-house that we could provide our kids, and then make it a collaborative, so that we could get other school systems to buy in and take their money and support ourselves with this effort. I don't think it's a pie-in-the-sky thing. I think it's a matter of finding space and a matter of just getting the right people in place. And I know we have the right people in our school system to do this. So just if you could put that on the back burner and think about it.
Certainly will.
It's a huge task.
Yes, I'll take a look at it.
But I think it's worth, I think it'd be worth the effort. So again, I thank you very much. I know that I've worked with some of you guys, and you're all professional, and you do it best for the kids in our city. You really do. So I commend you for your efforts, and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, thank you. So I think once the learning center's up and running, maybe we can look at the Dyslexia Center. Maybe not twice, two at the same time. Just very disturbing to me that dyslexia still doesn't make the list. It's infuriating, since it's, what percentage of the kids who have that type of disability actually have dyslexia is pretty significant, I believe, and they will not call it by its name. So I don't understand that, and it's... Massachusetts has done a lot better than the feds have with identifying this and making sure that kids are screened for it. But I have a question about the independent evaluation. If a parent chooses to do that, who pays?
Typically, we do. You know, when they come to us and they say that they have concerns about, you know, any of the evaluations, they have more questions that need to be answered that we didn't answer. They contact me. I actually handle all the independent evaluation requests. When they call me, that's when I kind of vet them kind of what it is that they're looking for, and then I can kind of direct them in the right place that I think will match, will be the best, able to answer their questions.
My last question is, this is great, I'm so glad you did this, but is this the only venue where you're sharing this with parents, or has this gone someplace else?
So I actually... Ginger McGill from the QPAC is going to speak next, but they've also shared it with families.
Okay, and I'm sure they had more parents there than we did. So it's great. And hopefully, it's online someplace, too, where you folks are pushing it, so the parents know, the folks behind you also. Great, thank you. I'm good.
Yeah, QPAC did a great presentation. It was wonderful. I did go know that. Mrs. Santoro.
Thank you. Just one question. What happened with Carroll School not taking the kids with IEP anymore? Is that something that we know why?
So it's a matter, they don't, it's not that they don't accept students, they don't accept funding from the district. So, you know, when we send students out of district, they are there with our funding. The Department of Ed is no longer allowing districts to send students there and accept their funding. If I'm not mistaken, it has to do with following some specific guidelines that they had to meet.
So is it just Quincy, or is it others?
No, it's all others. They no longer accept public school funding for their students. It's all private pay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from QPAC. We have Ms. McGill and Ms. Wood to present. Quincy Parents Advisory Council of Special Education.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Ginger McGill, and I am one of the co-chairs for the Parent Advisory Council to Special Education. And we have Emily here, who is also on our board, and Melissa, and I can let them introduce themselves.
I'm Emily Dackett, and I'm the Public Relations Officer for the QPAC.
And I'm Melissa Ritchie, and I am Vice President for QPAC. Hi.
So we are the Parent Advisory Board, but we are more than just that, right, to the district. We are advocates, collaborators, influencers, and liaisons, but most importantly, that we're your partners in special education. We would like to take a few moments to discuss where we've been, where we're going, and what we have coming in the upcoming months. So we started out having a full board for the first time this past year, and I think our efforts were really collaboration, getting the word of QPAC out there, letting parents know that we exist, what we can do, and how to best serve the community as well as the district. and how to best serve the community as well as the district. Having a full board for the first time, I think, was a fantastic accomplishment for us. We have elections coming up in March. We'll be voting again in April. Announce the new board in May. They'll have their first meeting in June, and then hopefully, you all will get to meet the new board. Hopefully, we all stay on as, as members. Some things that we've managed to accomplish for the fall. A big one, a big ask from parents was communication. There was a lack of communication of notices or just things that were going out, and we were able to identify that parents that had children out of district were not receiving the yearly contact cards to update their information. So a lot of parents, the email might have changed, or contact information might have changed. So we were able to identify that population. And for the first time this year, I believe it was 100 and plus, buck cards went out to out-of-district parents, asking them to update their information and send it back in. That information was then uploaded to Aspen. So now we have contact information for those parents. So that was a nice gap that we identified, that we were able to close in regards to communication. So now they're getting, you know, principal newsletters, community events that are happening, or information that's coming out from Quincy Public School Districts. And I think that's a good connection that families look for when their students do go out of district. How do we maintain that connection to what's going on back home? So I think that was a good thing that we managed to get done. We had our second annual trunk-or-treat, which was a huge success, and we hope to continue doing that year in now going forward. We had our annual gingerbread house, which is a huge event, and that's been going on for 10-plus years. And each year, we get more and more turnout. What we decided to do was also break that event up into two separate sessions, one for the younger kids and then one for the older kids, which I think also had a huge turnout from parents having that separation. So the older kids like to hang out with older kids, younger kids like to hang out with the younger kids. So that was a good thing that we did there. We had an oral presentation for Autism Smiles. So we collaborated with the Tufts Dental School, and they came in and did a presentation for parents on oral health, starting at age three, how important that was, how to get populations that have adverse, adversaries to dental hygiene or oral hygiene, how to get them on board. It was a great webinar that they did, and they've actually asked to come back and do that again. And they're willing to go to individual schools to do something, and that was through some grant money that they had received. So that was another great thing that we managed to get accomplished. We also had a webinar for parents in the fall that we did on eligibility and evaluations. So we are also trying out a hybrid model where we're doing either in-person, you can come to our spot that we have at Quincy High School, or you can join us online, and it's been a really good turnout, and we're getting more and more participation. When we were just doing in-person, our numbers were kind of low, 10, 12 parents coming. Since we've done the hybrid, we're getting up into the 20s of parents, you know, coming to see what we have to offer or to learn more to ask questions. So that's a good thing, if we can kind of continue on that trend upward. For the winter, we did a presentation on the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, when to use them, do you really need them? Is mediation better? Is the problem resolution system better? So that was a really good thing that we offered for parents. We have an upcoming webinar this, tomorrow, on
Hybrid, yeah.
Hybrid, yep. And that's going to be on anxiety and how to support children and recognize the symptoms of anxiety, especially coming out of the pandemic. I think we're seeing more and more of that with the student population. Another big ask, did you want to say something? Another big ask that we had from parents was after-school activities for the special education community. Sarah Wood, who is the other co-chair, was not able to be with us tonight. And I like to say that we're agents of change, and I like to say that Sarah's really a champion of change. She puts so much work into collaborating with outside organizations, and for the very first time, QPS launched a pilot program that is at Squanam for our after-school extracurricular activities for the CARES kids. And they had a great number of parents enroll. Because it was a pilot program, we could only take 10 kids. So there was a waitlist. And the idea was that when those 10 kids went through the pilot program to take the waitlist for the next 10 kids, and so on and so on. And I believe altogether, there were 42 kids that were interested in that. So that was huge. We were super excited about that. We also are doing our very first February school vacation program for the special education community. We have 40-plus kids also signed up for that. We could only take 30. So there is a waitlist for that, and that's a pilot also that'll be happening next week. So we're super excited about that. We have, in the spring, another webinar that's coming up that will also be hybrid, and that will be on transition planning. So lots of work to do. You know, we'll still continue to kind of go down that path, still looking for parents' feedback onto, you know, what it is that they feel is working, what's not working, and how best we can help, you know, support the district. Any questions?
All of that sounds so wonderful, but I love your energy the most. You have such a great, your vibe is just fabulous.
Thank you, thank you.
In which we have support groups too, which Ginger basically leads.
Oh, right. So for the first time, we, yeah, for the first time, we offered like a monthly parent, a parent support group, where parents can come and just vent, just talk.
Share resources.
Exactly. Sometimes like if you're having a particular thing happen with your child, your best resource is another parent that's already kind of walked that path and went down that road. So it's a really great space, and for the first time, we had dads come, which is great. And just like have that parent-to-parent connect. So many parents kind of feel isolated, and it's a good way to say, you know what, you're not alone. Like there is someone else that walked that path. We're your people. This is your tribe. We've got you.
Is that in-person?
It is in-person, yeah.
It's hybrid.
I was gonna say.
People joining.
Okay, sorry about that.
And just add on to, we were really dedicated to parent education and community outreach for this year. So our calendar, we were able to book something for the entire school year. So we also have someone coming to talk to parents about mass help. We have Powell coming to talk about mental health. And we have Family Ties coming to talk about how to organize your special education paperwork.
Some of our limitations, however, is we do have to find free.
Yes, yes.
They're all free, all the ones that we have found.
We've got everyone to come for free so far.
Free is good.
Mrs. Lebo.
So, yeah, thank you so much. This is wonderful. This board is incredible. The work you've done is incredible.
Incredible, and they're volunteers. I think that's important to recognize that.
And not only the information, but you know, the enrichments and the enhancements are so good, but also the information, because those things are nice, but the information is so, so, so important for these parents. And I can tell you're working really hard. Mr. Malaney's very happy that it's free. But maybe if you had some needs around the budget, you might want to get to us before budget time.
We try. We would love to.
Try again.
We do. We have, yeah, we have, we have, it's a minimal ask. There are costs involved with running a PAC. Workshops generally cost like $250 a workshop. So we really try to work really hard. If we take continuing education classes over the summer, sometimes we can get like a bonus. If you take this class, we'll give you a free webinar. So we try to do that over the summer to build that up so that we can have things booked out throughout the year.
And you pay for those classes yourself?
We do, yeah, yeah.
So not only are you great collaborators, but you're great financial supporters also.
Yeah, we are, we are. We try, we do, we try.
I'm so, I'm so proud of you and so appreciative of how you're advocating for your kids and the rest of the kids in Quincy Public Schools. So thank you very much.
Mr. Begoli.
I love the idea of you reaching out and updating contact information for each of your students who go out of district, because I think that's so important, to keep the connection with the homeschool.
Yes, it is very important.
So that, you know, they can be part of whatever goes on there.
And we have to thank Mrs. Owens for helping with that as well, and helping get our, the word out for all of our events as well.
Well, she's the one that basically keeps us afloat.
Mrs. Cahill.
I didn't finish.
He's not done.
Sorry. You looked at me, I thought you were done. Sorry.
He's finished.
Go, go right ahead, please.
Finished. I just, I just really think that's, what you guys are doing is, is great. And I hope it stays together and you get more people involved.
Yes.
Because as you go along, people drop off because they're no longer involved, their kids no longer involved in special education. So it's important to continue to recruit and get other parents involved.
Yes.
And you're right about moms. In all my evaluations that I did over the years in Quincy, I used to do a social assessment and an intake with every parent. I never had a parent, a father come in. It was always the mom.
Super exciting that we're starting to reach dads. Yeah, I'm pumped about that.
Well, dads don't know anything anyway, so. It's the moms who were the center of it. They really are, so. Thank you again.
You're welcome. I would also like to say that we developed a brochure. It's a little pamphlet, just three pages, but that we also had it translated into the five top languages in Quincy so that parents have something in their native language to be able to reference.
And for our hybrid meetings, we're able to get translators. So we do a pre-registration so that we know.
It's amazing.
And we're developing a website.
We have a volunteer who's building it, right?
I just want to add to Mr. Begoli's point. My husband went to almost all of my son's IEP meetings, so.
Because he doesn't work.
Oh, he does, works very hard. Mrs. Cahill.
Couple of questions that I did have. Amazing work. I mean, you know, as parents, we all know we are the best advocates for our kids on all different levels. So it's amazing to have your passion, but it's because it's what you do as parents. That's what we do. I do have a question, and it goes to cost. Like the Vacation Week program, how is that being run and paid for?
Escher funds?
Oh, okay, so you have some funds that are coming to you. And then, do you have, do you get assistance from Kelly Powers with social media and website? That she runs all of our social media and websites in the college, to be able, in the high school, to be able to get your message out to parents and things like that?
I don't believe so, no. No, that name's new for me, and
If I send out a flyer, Kelly
Will, will push it out.
We can also try to promote that.
Okay, that's good. Because that, that's, you know, hopefully, our population of parents and stuff are looking at that. And the other thing I was gonna say, question I asked this last year, where do you host your meetings at the high school? Because I came last year, I couldn't find it.
We need to make big signs. Pointing arrows and following footsteps.
We are right next to the school store in Quincy High School, and I believe it's room 147C.
Okay.
Across from the front office.
Across from the front office on the Y side.
And I would love if you would contact me and to see if maybe I can help you do some things in regard to fundraising and maybe get some money together for your programs.
Sure.
Okay, so my email is out there, and just send me an email, and we'll get together.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Santoro.
Thank you, Madam Sheehan. Little bit of history, names like McGrail, McKeon, and Dumis, were parents that many years ago fought like you people did for the rights of their children. And my message to them back then is the same to you now. Being a parent of a child that has a learning disability is, can be a lonely thing. And it's thanks to you that you people have become advocacy for them as well as stepping up and serving in this role. So for that, I thank you very much for those parents. Thank you.
Mr. Gattro.
I'm blown away by everything that you're doing. You know, I mean, all of us have served on volunteer boards and commissions in a variety of different capacities, but you mentioned that there's an election coming up, and I hope each of you are on the ballot for the reelection.
I'm in it for the long haul. I hope you're there too.
For some roles, just expand the number of elective offices, if you have that. A couple, a couple of other points. I love the ideas, the energy, the creativity on a variety of different areas. I love the fact that you've, you've got this savvy enough to move to hybrid meetings because you can increase, dramatically increase how many people at least listen in, you know? Maybe they, maybe they don't speak, maybe they don't weigh in, but, but you're reaching them. And so superb to do that. I think the last time you were before us, you mentioned the after-school activities, so I'm glad that some of, is that Escher money too? Or how is that?
Yes, that's Escher funding. So we'll be talking with, so we do have a leadership meeting once a month.
Yeah.
So we'll be talking about sustainability of that, right? So right now, we have those funds, and that's not going to be forever.
Right.
And if, if these programs are successful, how do we keep it sustainable? How can we keep funding them going forward?
That was my next question. You know what I mean? We have rec programs that are in perpetuity for a whole bunch of different students. We need, you know, equal access to after-care programs for the specialized students. So I'm a supporter and a fan of that, and, you know, I'm glad to hear. I know Mrs. Cahill was saying for the February, you know, I think those are great opportunities. And then you just ticked off the longest list of activities and forums and webinars and things that you do. Superb. You know, I mean, I know that everybody sitting behind you is just blown away by the work that you're doing to kind of amplify everything and support them and help them. They're all nodding. I mean, they're, they're blown away too. So thank you for all the time that you put in, labor, love, and it's making a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Begoli.
Just regarding your vacation activities, have you reached out to the Recreation Department of Quincy?
We have. We've reached out to them a few times. That's Michelle Hanley, is that right? She did try, she's, she launched her own through Quincy Rec, which my son is participating in, so I think that there is some success there. She's a very hard person to pin down, to talk about the true success of that. And I don't think that, that program's still running, it's what hasn't ended yet. But yeah, there's collaboration there.
Good, because I know they have the summer program that's been in, ongoing since the late '60s, early '70s.
I do know that they hired their very first special education director to run the summer program through Quincy Rec. I believe that person just started the summer of 2022.
Yeah, and that's free to everybody, so. So if we could get something through them, April vacation.
Yeah, sure, sure. I think, I think her challenge was staffing, so, but there is a collaboration there, and we can follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you very much.